Okay, we will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller, Rosado, Beck.
Here.
Knopf.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan. Callahan.
Alderman Callahan was having some issues logging in, so I think he'll join us when he can.
Okay, I did see his name on here. Meitzler.
Here.
Lay. Uer.
Here.
Serone. And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, sounds like we have enough to have our meeting tonight. Second up is the reminder to please speak directly into your microphone so we can get this recorded and rebroadcast. Item number three is approval of minutes from January 5, 2021. Does anybody have any comments or corrections or anything on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, not moved.
Second, Uer.
Motion by Knopf, second by Uer. Roll call, please.
Knopf.
Hi.
Chantet.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley. Uer.
Hi.
Serone. McFadden.
Hi.
And Beck.
Hi.
Motion carried, 10 to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight, Laura?
No, we don't.
Okay, great. Next up would be matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody from the public tonight?
Yes, we have a couple of members of the public. I don't know if they are here to speak on matters which are not on the agenda, but if you are, if you could please use the hand icon to raise your hand, I'd be happy to unmute your microphone. Okay, no, there are none.
Okay, all right, we'll move on then to item number six, which is Resolution 21-001, our extension of the police eligibility list. Okay, that's on my list. This is, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners has determined that it's in the best interest of the Police Department to extend the eligibility list for up to an additional year during the ongoing challenges presented by COVID that would make it, I guess, nearly impossible to do an in-person testing event. And it'll also reduce or postpone budgeted estimated expenditure of $8,000 for this year. So does anybody have any questions about this? Chief, did you want to say anything about it?
Just that, like I said, the memorandum indicates that this could be extended for up to a year. It's possible we may exhaust the list prior to that period of time, but this is really just a delaying tactic to try to get us to the full reopening phase. Any testing cycle usually, depending on the cycle, averages between 100 to 200 applicants. So to have 100-plus people in a large-scale event, I think, is impractical right now. And with the timeline, it takes months, several months to, from soup to nuts to get the testing process completed, the largest of which is the physical abilities testing portion, which would require all those people to be in the same space or close proximity to one another for an extended period of time. So that's why we're making the request. We've done at least one time in the past, and it's, we've had some decent success with it. So we're hoping it can get us through to full Phase 5 of the reopening.
Okay. Does anybody on the council have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hey, Chief, just a quick question, so I can see it more clearly. The people on this list, the people who have been vetted already?
Yes, so this is basically this extension of our current police applicant eligibility list. They've been through the entire testing process and have been placed on the list in order of precedence to include any kind of additional points for preference, military preference, educational preference, certified applicant preference, those sorts of things. So all we'd be looking to do is extend the current list we have in place right now up to one more year. It's supposed to expire August 9 of this year. We're hoping that we can extend it to August 9 of 2022.
That, to me, makes a lot of sense. If they've been vetted and we would hire them if there was a position open to them, and then they're willing to come after two or three years. I mean, that makes sense to me. Am I seeing it correctly or incorrectly?
That's correct. You know, so this list has been in place for some time at this point. We have hired some candidates off this list, but about two-thirds of the list still remains intact. And so we think there are enough viable candidates there. And again, this is just a foot in the door. This is the beginning of the hiring, the pre-hiring process. So there are, there's another battery of hurdles they would near to clear before we would be hired as a Batavia police officer. But yes, they've finished the initial portion of the pre-hiring process. So this is where we would normally select applicants for pre-hiring.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution 21-001, our extension of the police officer eligibility list.
Second, Meitzler.
Motion by Wolf, second by Meitzler. Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley absent, Uer.
Hi.
Serone absent, McFadden.
Hi.
Miller absent, Rosado absent, Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
Chantet.
Hi.
And Baron.
Hi.
Motion carried, 10 to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up would be item number seven, which is Resolution 21-002, our authorizing purchase of one 2021 Ford utility police interceptor all-wheel-drive vehicle as part of the ongoing replacement vehicle program. This is almost a yearly thing, it seems like, a purchase of one squad. Does anyone have any questions? Or Chief, would you like to say anything about this?
Yes, just a few comments. Alderman, typically, we request a few additional vehicles, but due to the issues they have with the Assembly lines at Ford, due to the COVID pandemic, we were forced to extend some of our other vehicles beyond the service life we had, expectations we had for them. So the positive outcome of that was we have some newer vehicles that we brought into fleet service later than we expected. So we reduced our requests this year to one. You had a question before that meeting began about the hybrid version, that if you look at the, with the option 99B is the lead for the all-wheel-drive hybrid. So we have three, this is the 3.3-liter gas engine. That's basically standard for the rest of our fleet as well, but it is $3,500 cheaper.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any questions on this?
This is Joe, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Chief, looking at the budget, does this account for both line items under account 6450 for the vehicle as well as the graphics?
And the reason- The graphics, the graphics I do not believe are included in this. This is just the purchase. We get them from a separate vendor. This is for the purchase from Curry Motors with the additional components we have added to the order. So that would be a separate vendor that we played, in place the graphics with. That is not included in this.
Now, the reason I ask is in your memo, you also indicate the cost for doing the radio changeover, the equipment changeover, this dripping of the old decals. And when I, when I compare their, add the price of the extra work that has to be done once the vehicle arrives, plus the price of the vehicle, it comes out to about the same amount as you've got in the budget for those two items combined. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I apologize. Actually, rereading it, you may be actually correct about that. So typically, we separate those costs, but it does look like those are included. Although it doesn't expressly indicate that.
And it's the same question I always ask Rohat whenever he's talking about money, is how much was in the budget and are we still within? And I think it is. If you're, if you combine those two, the two lines together, you're still just under what you've expected to spend. And just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Right now, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution 21-002, our authorizing the purchase of one 2021 Ford utility police interceptor all-wheel-drive vehicle as part of the ongoing vehicle replacement program.
Second, Knopf.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley absent, Uer.
Hi.
Serone absent, McFadden.
Hi.
Miller absent, Rosado absent, Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
Chantet.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Motion carried, 10 to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next would be item number eight, Resolution 21-005, our authorizing extension of the FFCRA sick leave. Alderman Chantet.
Indeed, thank you. So last year, the President did sign into law extensions basically regarding femla related to COVID. The federal government did not extend that, though, but did allow for organizations to extend it through a voluntary purpose. Staff is recommending that we do do that, a purpose of that being that if we have employees who are concerned about getting paid, they might be less likely to self-report. So this will at least give them pay and then give them a chance to be more responsible for not spreading the disease. The extension allows for up to 80 hours of additional paid sick time. Now, that carried over from last year if they had used any portion of that, so that brings it down. We're going to do this until mid-year. Staff is recommending that we end this June 30, but staff is going to evaluate the situation and recommend any additional changes if they are wanted. So I think I covered everything. Laura or Wendy, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Wendy was not able to make the meeting tonight, but I did have a couple of things that are part of the context of why we are recommending this. The one is that, at this point, not only is the vaccine not widely available, but very little of it is present in King County at this time. The other is the news that more virulent strains continue to appear here in the United States, and thus we are concerned about future flare-ups. And like you said, we don't want employees to have to choose between, you know, staying home and not getting paid if they still have some of this leave left that they did not use in 2020. I want to point out that it's only extending the leave time, it's not adding any new benefit time. So if they had previously used the 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave in 2020, they wouldn't have any available to them to use in 2021. But for those who had not expended that, we wanted them to have the balance available to them. And we will take another look at it and see what the world looks like in June 30 of 2021.
Thank you. And any questions from the committee?
Okay, if not, I would move that we send Resolution 21-05, authorizing extension of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act benefits provided under the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act related to COVID-19.
Second, Uer.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chantet.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley absent, Uer.
Hi.
Serone absent, McFadden.
Hi.
Miller absent, Rosado absent, Beck.
Hi.
And Knopf.
Hi.
Motion carried, 10 to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be item number nine, which is Resolution 21-003, our adopting the 21 to 2023 Strategic Action Plan. Alderman Chantet.
Thank you. So the resolution is to formally adopt the update, which brings us into 2023. That's following meetings we've had this year and discussions regarding the language and whatnot. We're seeing the memo from Laura. We did make some, some changes. It is strongly similar to previous versions, but we did tighten up language and whatnot. Laura, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone in the committee want, any additional discussion? If not, I would move that we approve Resolution 21-03, adopting the Vision Mission Fundamental Values and Strategic Action Plan for 2021 to 2023.
Second. Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chantet.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Wolf. Wolf.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley absent, Uer.
Hi.
Serone absent, McFadden.
Hi.
Miller absent, Rosado absent, Beck.
Hi.
And Knopf.
Hi.
Motion carried, 10 to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up would be item number 10, Ordinance 21-10, authorizing ordinance for an AEPA loan. Alderman Chantet.
Thank you. So back early in the year, in July, we had approved ordinance 20-41. That was for 3.9 million for the improvements to a plant, a little bit higher than engineers' estimate, but staff is recognizing that we probably can try to stay within that window of 3.9. The problem is, if we do end up going over and we need to ask for additional money from the state, it is a more cumbersome process. So it is easier to get a preapproval now for a slightly higher dollar amount in case we do need that. Interest rate is extremely favorable, 1.35%. Where do I get loans like that? Any, any questions from the committee? And Laura, is there anything else that we need to add?
No, unless Gary or Jeremy have anything to add.
I can just add a couple of brief, brief comments. One of the unfortunate downsides of the low-interest loan programs are that you have to do a preliminary engineering study very, very early in the process in order to get an application for the loan. And obviously, there's no project if you don't get the loan, and you don't want to do engineering before you have a project. So it's kind of a chicken or an egg scenario. So when Peggy says early on that the number came in higher than the engineer's estimate, that's in reference to the engineer's estimate that was prepared way back at the beginning, when we didn't even really know or have engineering completed yet. The actual engineer's estimate, when compared with the bids, you know, fell right in the range. There was a couple of bidders who were low, lower than the engineer's estimate, and a couple that were higher. So as Alderman Chantet just said, the interest rate ended up a little bit over 1%. And when we did the original budget projections, we were assuming an interest rate over 2%. So that's obviously going to save, you know, provide a long-term savings over the life of the loan. And then finally, what's not in the memo is, the reason why we're confident, we think we probably could still hit that original budget value, is there are funds in there for removal of the filter media within those large tanks. All of you have been out to the treatment plant, and in the Northern Building, there's those, there's really large metal tanks. The filter media inside there is going to be taken out, and testing indicates that it's probably going to be able to be landfilled and not treated as a special waste. So if that's the case, there's, there's funds in there for special waste treatment that will no longer be needed. So, so those are the, and we are recommending the new limit of 4.425 million for the loan. And as Peggy says, it's frankly a lot easier to ask for it right now.
Excellent, thank you. Any additional discussion or questions?
As Mark, I have a question. What is the, what's the yearly impact, the difference in the loan amount, like what they will be paying per year?
I don't know that I have that exact dollar value, but again, our original projection was for an interest rate of over 2%. But the new interest rate, a little bit over 1.3%. I, as Peggy said, I, we have the revenue stream will, will cover the additional debt, given the fact that we're paying less interest.
Laura, can we get that number for city council meeting?
And I think that was one of the things that we had talked about during budget was that the rate increases that we had and the revenue stream that was coming in on the Water Department would cover that loan.
Jeremy just sent me a message and said it's about $35,000 difference annually.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Questions? Okay, if not, I would move that we recommend council ordinance 21-10, authorizing the City of Batavia, Kane, and Page Counties to issue waterworks revenue bonds and aggregate principal amount not to exceed 4.425 million in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the Public Water Supply Loan Program.
Second, O'Brien.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chantet.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley absent, Uer.
Hi.
Serone absent, McFadden.
Hi.
Miller absent, Rosado absent, Beck.
Hi.
And Knopf.
Hi.
Motion carried, 10 to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, next up would be item number 11, Resolution 21-004, our approving task order number four with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories in the amount of $204,200 to develop wiring diagrams and procurement of five fabricated control and relay panels for the Paramount Distribution Substation. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Alan. This is, again, the ongoing work at the Paramount Substation. We are purchasing some control and relay panels for the distribution substation, five of them. The relays have to provide electrical protection, self-help check, alarming, telemetry, fault, and event recording. They are going to be same equipment that we're using at the other newest substations. What else? We had the construction engineering consultant, Power Systems Engineering, reviewed a proposal, and they recommend going with it. Staff reviewed it. They're also in agreement with it. It is, it is in the budget for 2021. So that's pretty much it, Gary. I don't know if I've missed anything. If you have anything to add to that?
No, you got everything, Alderman. Thank you. The only thing is, on the second page where we did the cost summary, I should have caught this when I reviewed the memo. Instead of saying NA in those two, or two rows, it should be saying TBD, because they just haven't been bid out yet. It's not that they're not applicable and they won't happen, it's just that they haven't done yet. But if you look at the bottom total, 4.19 million versus the 5.125 million, and the savings so far, 680,000, even if those two items, you know, come in, we're still going to be ultimately a saving. So Rohat did a nice job of summarizing all the various contractual costs and where we stand. And as you can see, overall, we've had good savings on this project. So that was all I had to add.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hey, Gary, I was going to make a comment. I did appreciate that table on page two, because we've been doing a lot of approving of Paramount Substation, and we've been doing it incrementally. And this kind of, you know, gives us a good summary of what's going on. And-
I'm sorry, Alderman, last time, and I, it does help for, it is a nice summary.
Yes. So we purchased these, just for clarity's sake, we purchased these relays, then we're going to install them. We'll have to have them installed, have the wire pulled, and then we're getting close to it, because construction is starting in mid-February on the substation. So by midsummer, we should be up and running, correct? We have commissioning in that schedule?
That is all correct.
So, does anyone else have any other questions or concerns?
This is Joe, I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Joe, please.
Gary, Mike brought it up. That table was awesome. It was nice having all that to see what was there, what was left, all in one spot. We didn't have to go hunt for it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rohat, for doing that.
Yeah, thanks goes to Rohat. He pulled all that together. So thank you.
Anyone came to make a motion? I will make a motion to recommend city council passage of Resolution 21-004, our approving task order number four with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories Incorporated in the amount of $204,200 to develop wiring diagrams and procurement of five fabricated control and relay panels for the Paramount Distribution Substation.
Second, Meitzler.
We have a motion and a second. Jennifer, roll call, please.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley absent, Uer.
Hi.
Serone absent, McFadden.
Hi.
Miller absent, Rosado absent, Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
Chantet.
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
And Wolf?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 0.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Um, up next would be item number 12, which is ordinance 21-11. Uh, proving purchase of real property comprised of approximately 6.6 acres. Identified by permanent index numbers of 12, 18, 100, 012. And 12, 18, 100, 013. And 12, 18, 100, dash 23. Um, Alderman O'Brien?
The, uh, Fabian, uh, excuse me, the, the water treatment plant on Fabian Parkway is scheduled for some updating and expansion this year. And since the, uh, and staff is pretty confident that we'll be in decades ahead continuing to use the, uh, this, uh, water plant, treatment plant. So they're looking just in case in the future, if we have any, we're mandated by the I E P A. And if there's any other mandates that are unforeseen today as similar to what happened at the water treatment plant with the phosphates being emptied into the Fox River. Something we had, was mandated to us to address. Uh, you, staff is recommending that for future expansion. We've purchased the 6.6 acres from Shodin Group, $125,000. It's just trying to have a vision of what the future might bring to us and be, uh, prepared to, uh, deal with that. Uh, Gary, is there anything else I may have left out?
No, uh, we do actually have funds for this land purchase, but they are not identified as a specific item in the budget. Uh, we did that because at the time of budget preparation, this was still, uh, a matter for executive session. And we didn't know how it was going to go forward. So there are funds in the budget and the capital, uh, budget for this. And that being said, um, if this goes to closing and it successfully closed, uh, water department will really immediately take steps to begin getting appraisal for the West Main Street parcel. Uh, 10 acres roughly that we own on West Main Streets. Um, that will be basically surplus at that point and no longer needed for the water utility or any other city, uh, city department. So that, knock on wood, shoe bringing revenue, 21 as well, that sale.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody else? I'll make a motion, we recommend city council passage of ordinance 21-11 approving purchase of real property. I don't need to go into the index numbers. Any second?
Second. Well.
We have, uh, a motion and a second, Jennifer, please, uh, roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meixler?
Aye.
Malay absent, Uwer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller absent, Risotto absent, Beck?
Aye.
Na?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
And Wolf?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 0.
Thank you. Hey, Alan?
Yes.
Uh, we could probably put that on the consent agenda.
That, that would be fine with me.
Along with the resolution 21-004-R.
Sure, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
I, I did make comment, but I had my mute, my, uh, mic muted. Um, the, I'm sure that the sale of the property on Main Street will more than cover the price that we pay for this piece of land.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, now for what everybody wanted to be here for. Okay, if I can get there, give me a second, okay? Um, this would be the, uh, discussion on the closure of North River Street for public dining for the year 2021. Laura, do you want to start this off?
Sure, I think that this came about as a result of, um, the project status that I gave last week. Uh, we provided an update that, of course, the, um, city at the, um, council's direction, city staff had prepared an application to Illinois Department of Transportation to permanently, uh, make North River Street a one-way southbound. And we have not yet received IDOT's, um, response to that permit, whether they're going to, uh, approve it or deny it. But in the meantime, we want to be prepared for the upcoming outdoor dining season. And, uh, I had mentioned that we were going to submit a, uh, request for a permit to close North River Street. And I believe it was Alderman Beck who said, um, we should have a discussion about that. Whether we want that to be a one-way, uh, closure or whether we want that to be the full road to be closed. And so, um, that's just kind of setting the table for this discussion.
Um, I guess the question.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Abby.
So, and I know I've seen this come up before in terms of how we try and speed up a response from IDOT. Is that going to be something we need to put political pressure on as, as Gary often mentions? That we need to craft a resolution and/or and send it up the chain? That way, should we get on the phone with our state representatives to try and get some faster response times? What's the, what's the process for getting that accomplished?
Gary, I'll let you chime in as to what our strategy has been so far. You know, we check in with them about every three weeks about what the status of our permit is, is that correct?
Sorry, I was muted again. Um, we've done regular status check-ins with IDOT. I don't know that I can directly answer Alderman Beck's question. I mean, at the staff level, there's not a whole lot of leverage we can exert to tell IDOT staff level to hurry things along. So that's the whole point behind why we now have submitted multiple permit requests. So that, once we kind of hear back, we'll have a little better plan as to what, what we're going to do. But I, I can't answer her question directly.
Yeah, and I, IDOT historically has not been real well with pressure. Even just trying to call them and talk to somebody down there doesn't get you even an answer that you, you think that, you know, might actually happen. So.
I emailed a guy that I've talked to multiple times at IDOT, uh, about just questions I've asked him in the past and, and he said that he would look into it. He did see it, it was in the, it was under review right now. For the one-way.
Yeah, that's Jonathan and that's the person that we deal with.
So I mean, I think at this point, we potentially have to plan on, to me, a, a, a one-way street. And I, I think the more that I thought about this and the more I drove through there a few times and looked at, you know, the street again and thought about how we're gonna, you know, how do we do the farmer's market? How do we have it open during the week? What, what makes the most sense? And I think the availability of being able to drive down one side of that street, I think, makes traffic patterns and just the ability to make that street seem like it is open. Like every business is open with that street having traffic through it. And not an orange and white barricade sitting at the end of the street. I, I think that is a big enough barrier for a lot of people, just the idea of, wow, there's a barrier there. That, that stops people from looking or, you know, even thinking about going down that street to do anything. So I really feel like that to me is the positive we have to plan on. Um, whether or not we get a full approval back from IDOT in time to start putting tables out there and making it one-way, I think we should just plan to be doing that. You know, if they come back to us and tell us we can't, then we'll have to deal with that when we get that answer back. But I don't think they're going to send up, you know, state police or anything to arrest us if we turn that one-way before we get that approval back. I might be wrong and I'll probably be the one that gets arrested, but I, I think we just need to do that. I mean, I think we need to plan on that and we need to figure out with, you know, the partners that we have, the businesses, Main Street and the Chamber, how we start to utilize it as soon as we can this spring. I mean, I think we ought to close the street down now and have sled races down State Street and, you know, have some fun over there during the winter.
Yes, I think that when and if, uh, you know, construction happens this summer, um, any orange and white road closed signs are going to kill that street and kill the businesses there. Um, so I think the, I think we need to be as creative and proactive as possible to keep that street vibrant and full of people. In whatever capacity we can. If you want to get arrested, Alan, I'll totally go down there and get arrested.
Okay. I'd be okay with that. Laura, you're muted.
Um, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, I was just waiting to be called upon.
Okay, I thought you said your hand.
So is the, is the direction not to apply for any type of temporary closure? And we shall see what happens with, uh, response to the, uh, permit request that we currently have on file. And, um, at such point in the future, if we don't have a permit, you might direct us to close the road anyway.
Another question on that, have we, and you said we've submitted multiple permits. Have any of them been to shut them, shut the street down as we have all the years prior, just on the weekends for farmer's market?
Actually, that one we haven't done yet because we made the, almost a month ago now, we made the permit request to, um, close for the season. So we, the farmer's market one, usually the special event ones go much quicker because they're just, they are just literally that. They're one day at a time. And IDOT doesn't have mu- as much consternation about those. So, um, we've have in the past years, not even submitted special events ones until February, March sometime. I'm not really worried for timing, the timing of that. I'm, I'm hoping that by February, March, we're going to know what's going to happen with this road.
Yeah, and, and Gary, I have one question. If we decided, you know, again, with the partners of Main Street and Chamber and the businesses, if we decided to move the farmer's market one block north and close it from State Street to Spring Street for the farmer's market, we would not need IDOT approval for that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I, I think to me, and I don't want to jump forward on this, but I think that that makes the most sense. If we have to make the change to shut a portion of the street down to do the farmer's market. If we don't need the state's approval to do that, that's a much shorter term decision. We could make that determination at a council meeting or at a cow meeting and, and enact that pretty quickly. The only thing that gets us into, you know, a, a time constraint, I guess, is if we have to wait on IDOT, if we want to change something at the Wilson Street, River Street connection.
Yeah, that's always the hurdle is the Wilson Street intersection.
You know, and I would like to, as soon as we get this figured out, I think we really need to have not only a, a communication, but a brainstorming session with the business owners, the Main Street and the Chamber, so that we can sit down and figure out how we're going to attack this through multiple years and seasons of construction. So that we really try to get a plan that everybody buys into, to move forward with. Cause I, I think if we don't do that and if we don't have extremely good communication before it starts, it's going to be hard to have good communications during it.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, just so I'm, just so I'm clear, is it, it's council's intentions though, to turn this into a one-way southbound roadway, correct?
Yes.
I think, I, I would say it's my intention to not have orange and white barricades. And however that gets, that's what I, it could be season, all season long, completely blocked off. If we can come up with a prettier solution for closing the street. I think that is, I think the businesses would be on board with that. That has always been the sticking point. So if we.
Unfortunately, that's kind of a law, but, um, that's where we came to the one-way southbound. Cause the one-way south allow for those barricades to be up at State Street and not at Wilson Street. And, and therefore the perception from Wilson Street will be, will be, you know, just the outdoor.
But I also think that there's probably a case to be made that if a law is in place for safety and we're saying that they have to be orange and white giant barricade with the road closed for safety if we have a full closure. But if it's a one-way, then we don't and the access is still the same for the cars coming through. Then that's kind of a lot that maybe we can, we can push the muscles down in Springfield to say, is this really?
I don't, I don't know if you understood, Alderman Beck. If it's one-way southbound, then vehicles are already prohibited from traveling northbound. And there will no longer be a turn lane on Wilson Street. There will be do not enter signs there. There won't be an option for vehicles to, to go up the street northbound. So that's why it's not needed, uh, at that point to have the barricades of the road closed because it's no longer a permitted turning movement. That doesn't mean though, that at the north end, where vehicles are legally permitted to travel southbound, that you wouldn't need the barricades because you still would need to close the road at the north end.
Um, I think. If I could add to that, just for clarification sake, we had the discussion last year. Um, and Gary, please correct me if I'm wrong. We could also have applied to IDOT to permanently close that road. And we would have been able to put planters, some type of, um, thing that was a permanent, uh, barricade to cars entering that was not orange and white barricades. But the discussion was that they didn't, that we didn't want to keep that closed 100% of the time. Instead, we wanted to make it one-way.
And so if I'm understanding correctly, if we go through the one-way process, we get that approved. Then at Wilson Street, we no longer have a turn lane and we have a sign that says, one-way, do not enter. Is that correct?
Yeah, you'll have all those standard signage that says, one-way, do not enter, correct?
So from a physical cars perspective, there's actually quite the option of turning and going down that street in my automobile. There's no physical barrier preventing me.
That's right, but, but the signage from a legal standpoint, put on your council member hat for a second. From a legal standpoint, you're protected because that vehicle is now making illegal turn and it's paying legal signage to go the wrong way up a one-way street.
I have a hard time spreading my legal hat from my logical and actual safety hat. So from an actual safety perspective, we, the orange barricades versus the no barricades, doesn't make a lot of sense. From a legal standpoint, I can get covering ourselves in a legal battle. But from an actual pedestrian person on the street standpoint, it still doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So that's.
Oh, I, I fully agree. That's, that's why the other option was out there as Laura just mentioned. And that was some sort of physical extension of the sidewalk, installation of planters to, to completely kind of protect the roadway from vehicular traffic. But again, it was decided not to go down that road because that would mean permanent close, permanent, permanent closure of the road. If you operate permanent closure of the road, then you're Jersey barriers and orange and, orange and white barricades.
Laura, can I jump in here for a minute? This is Daniel.
Yes.
Alderman Beck brings up an, uh, excellent point, as, as, as does Gary. I mean, these are the MUTC regulations. Uh, but, uh, the, the practical matter is that, that's correct. It doesn't seem appropriate from a safety standpoint and particularly so due to the fact that we keep configuring and reconfiguring and reconfiguring this roadway. Uh, my concern from a public safety perspective is that it's going to cause confusion amongst the motoring public. And they're not going to know which end is up. Is it one-way today? Is it closed? Is it both ways today? Uh, are, are the barricades down? Are the barricades up? I, I, I'm concerned about that, uh, because we keep, keep reinventing this street. So I, 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 I encourage the council to come up with a permanent solution, whatever it might be. And we, we stick with that. So people get used to traffic patterns there. Uh, and it'll reduce the, uh, concerns from, uh, the vehicle versus pedestrian or bicyclist standpoint. And if we're gonna have it one-way sometimes and then have, continue to have our, uh, uh, our farmer's market during the summer, uh, even in the one-way configuration, I would recommend that during those periods of time, we do include type 3 barricades at both ends there to make sure that nobody accidentally drives into the middle of the farmer's market.
To make sure that nobody accidentally drives into the middle of the farmer's market.
Yeah, a- and I think to me in my mind, what we need to do for at least the next year or two during construction. Is it needs to be one-way. I think there needs to be traffic there to be able to help to support the businesses that are there. If there's no vehicular traffic, that's gonna be a detriment to those businesses. So I think that that's a necessity. To have one-way traffic there during this. After the construction is done on One Washington Place. I think it will then be incumbent upon the council to make a decision. Do we leave one-way traffic there? Into the future. To promote the, 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 that vehicular traffic through there. And I think that may also help with the traffic that's generated from One Washington Place in the parking garage. If your only option is to go back and go to the west across the bridge when you leave there on a right-hand only turn. Off of Southbound River Street. It will take traffic that's going east or south away from that intersection. And try to limit the traffic motions through there. So I think that could be a benefit to us. If it's completely blocked off, then you're putting all the traffic through the light. Which I think will end up being a, a mess if, if we don't have another way out from the parking garage. So I think that at least for the duration of the. Construction over there, that it should remain one-way. South and, you know, only a right-hand turn out of that Southbound River Street.
In my opinion, forever, it's one-way south unless there is some sort of access that would allow businesses to have. Which there, which there isn't. There won't be any way for. Any of those businesses to restock uh, their goods. Because if you close off that whole, the street completely, then there's no way to get. Goods to those businesses. I think it's one-way south forever. We close it off when we, when we have special events. The only thing I can imagine, because I, I understand the concerns about, hey, we don't want a car accidentally going down there, which is. Shoot, a car can go down the wrong way anywhere. I mean, a car could. Drive in the left-hand lane when they're supposed to be the right-hand lane. You can't, we can't stop everything. The only thing I can imagine doing is having some sort of, for those special events. Is a, you know, planters that we can easily move, but I know that that's not something that can be easily moved because anything that's gonna be substantial is gonna be really heavy. Um, that you could put out there. But other than that, I mean. I hate to say take your chances, but I think Gary, the, the diagrams that you sent before. Frankly, it's probably gonna be a little unsightly with the number of one-way do not enter signs that you had in that diagram. If that's a requirement, it kind of stinks. That there's that many, but I don't think we're gonna be changing the intersection a lot. We're gonna, once we get the permit. To do it, it's done and, and if it happens in the next handful of weeks, the, the last letter that I got from I dot was. That it was in permit process and he expected it to be done in a few weeks, but he was gonna check on that. And if in February they say, here you go, go ahead and do it. Then in February, we do it and there's less traffic out there right now and it tests us up for a successful summer rather than. Doing something in part April or May when. People have already started to walk down that street the wrong way. You know what I'm saying? We, we have the traffic on that street.
Yeah, I think the best case scenario is we get approvals from I dot. Within the next month or so to do a one-way southbound. That will enable us to implement the one-way southbound. And then we can sit down with all the business owners and stakeholders and say. You know, this is, this is the plan and, you know, how are we gonna work now with this one-way southbound configuration? In order to maximize, you know, table space, maximize event gathering. And as Alderman Will said, we'll have one-way southbound, vehicles will still be able to travel down the street. And no longer will we have people coming from Wilson northbound. That's the best case scenario.
Alan, I just want to point out that we have a couple of members of the public who are here and if uh. Would now be an appropriate time for them to provide comment.
Sure, i- is everybody on the council? Okay, or do we have anybody else on the council that wants to speak about this? Okay, if there's somebody from the public that would like to speak, let's hear them.
Okay, if you want to raise your hand, if you'd like to um, provide comments. James Joseph, I've activated your microphone, so you should be able to speak now. But you're self-muted.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Uh, I wanted to give a minute in case uh, anybody else, any other businesses wanted to speak, um. I can tell you that um. I do appreciate that um. There's realization of the severity. Of what the um. Project could do to this area and so the necessity to. Bring traffic to River Street in the, in the fashion that we're talking about. I really appreciate that that is realized. Um, I also appreciate the fact that uh, we're talking about opening up more communication. Between the city and businesses. Uh, as this project goes forward and especially when it comes to anything that we've done on. Uh, in my little area there, um. One of the things I did, I did want to say is that right now, I'm not sure. If anybody's really aware of the businesses that are actually still on River. Um, the reasons for some of the businesses departures are not due to a lack of traffic. It was due to a global pandemic. But right now. On River Street, you have Taco Grande. River's Edge. Tom and the Instrument Exchange, myself. And Missy at the Tea Tree. And all of us. Are down. Right where we're talking about between State and Wilson. So moving the farmer's market down, I know that was, that was discussed at one point, moving it farther north. I'm gonna tell you. That's not really gonna benefit anybody. We can think that people are gonna walk. Over, but they don't because a lot of people are parking. On further north. To come to the farmer's market. So they're just going to go to the farmer's market. Then go to their cars and forget about what is south of them. So moving the farmer's market north isn't, would not help any business, including mine, and nobody's gonna sit outside River's Edge. Because the farmer's market technically won't be down there. So that's incredibly crucial. That it stay where it stays and probably at least for this season, at the rate that we're getting. The vaccines out. It, we, the social distancing is gonna have to continue. When it comes to the farmer's market construction. So it's gonna need as much of River Street as, 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 as possible. I think. Because we're not looking at a, at a really, really rapid vaccination to where everybody's gonna feel safe. So the social distancing is still gonna have to be part of what we do. Also, when you're talking about closing down river. And for outdoor dining. You have to remember that out the, there were, there was an outdoor dining. Area. That will be taken away by the Shodin project for three businesses that are. One, two, yeah, three businesses that are on Wilson Street. Uh, Wilson Street Tavern, uh, Bocadillos Cafe and Okin Swine. So if people still don't feel good yet about dining inside, but they want to eat there. They're not gonna have an option because right now that'll be Shodin's. Whole area right there. They'll be taking over that area. Which is a grave concern because I can tell you personally, I know a lot of. Incredibly intelligent people that still come spring and summer will be fearful about indoor dining. Because. We, we just. A lot of people are and we have to respect them and so the more options we give them. I will tell you, I'm. When it comes to a one-way, whatever we can do to keep the barrier to a minimum. If we're gonna close it is the best. My concern about leaving it a one-way and then throwing out their tables, I gotta tell you guys. I'm out there all the time. People do not care that it's 20 miles an hour. They don't care that it's 30, two blocks down. I see it time and time and time and time again. And if you guys want some revenue, just have one squad car out on River Street all day long. Because that's where your revenue is gonna come from. Because speeding tickets are gonna be written left and right. And that's my concern because I see it. I don't even let my daughter, when she's at the shop, go too far because people just. It's not, if the, the speed down there is not good. So that's a serious safety concern I have. I know I was driving to my shop. Reduced my speed to 20 miles an hour and got past two cars who were at least doing 45. This was three weeks ago. And they were going south on River Street. On the Warner. So these, there's a lot more that has to be seen and the only way you can see it is when you're down there. And I see it because I'm down there all the time. Even when my shop's not open, I'm down there. That's where I take my walks. I walk back and forth, up and down. You got a new business opening down there, Dash 10 Networks, they're, they're my neighbors. And right now, any traffic that we can keep on River, any, especially during these closures because. Before you know it, people are, are walking all over the place. I saw it time and time again when the street was closed. The street would be packed. And there was so much foot traffic. All over the place that i- i- it was unbelievable. And the, the shame about it was the only people that were really posting about it. Was River, uh, River's Edge. Because I think if we, if that would have been more public. Everybody would have seen the benefit of what we're talking about. In this action plan. So. You know, a- a- anybody that's talked about that the decrease of actual car traffic has hurt their business. Most of the businesses that were down there are. Their destination points as it is. Especially my guy Tom next door to me. I mean, he's got. He's got appointments, all, he's got appointments left and right for uh. Lessons. People check him out all the time. People know when I'm open. People have been coming this year. From, all the way from Elgonquin to Batavia because there's no used bookshop between. Dundee. And myself. So they have come all the way to our town. Because there's a used bookstore on River Street. These are things to keep in mind. When we're talking about this going forward. I know that when we were talking about doing it one-way, there was the, the al- alternative kinds of closure, there's something about like poles. Or something like that that could be put in place. I don't know. The more we can do to make it aesthetic, the better. And the faster that we can get the proper equipment, the better. We don't have one big gigantic property owner that can throw in. Money to. Be able to get the equipment we need down there. We're all ju- just a bunch of little businesses. Which. Last time I checked, that's. You know. Part of the coolest thing about this town is that we watch out for little guys. So if we could keep, uh, keep that kind of thought process in mind and keep these kinds of things in mind when we make these judgments. I think it would be very, very beneficial for everybody down there. All. Four of us that are left.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else who would like to speak if you would raise your hand? Okay, I do not see any more hands. So, oh, go ahead.
Hey Alan. Hey, I just, I just wanna make a point. I just wanna make a point, you know, to James's. Comment about traffic. That, that road is not designed for 40 mile an hour traffic. And that, that really cannot go on. That you talk about safety. That is a safety issue we need to address immediately. And I hope the chief is listening and, and he takes. Under advisement that, that maybe we, we control the traffic down there. I know it's, it's, it's not just ticket writing, you know, it has to be educational that people start to realize. The whole purpose of that street is to be a shed street, a complete shed street. And you can't have people flying around on it. So I, I would be, be very strongly that we arrest that kind of behavior immediately.
Um, to piggyback off of Mike's point there, um, about traffic calming and that's something that is in the. Strategic plan that we just passed. Um, and I think, I think we can all agree that. Traffic, you know, the, the posted, the posted speed limit is definitely not the thing that drives um, how fast people drive. Um, it's, you know, their level of comfort. So to, to James's concern about. The one-way mixing with, with. People dining and people using that street, we have to make sure that there are pieces in place to make it uncomfortable for people to drive that fast. And that goes for all of our neighborhood and, and downtown streets. And then I have a, well, I have a question for the downtown business owners. I feel like the, you know, I've. I don't know if there's any more on, but something maybe we should throw out to them or the River Street business owners that we should throw out to them before. We apply for the full closure permit is to say. You know, what would they prefer? Um, a- as we're waiting for the one-way. To be approved or denied, would they rather have the full orange and white barricades up? Or would they rather have outdoor dining on the fringes, on the sidewalks to. At least give them a little bit of social distancing and added outdoor dining? Or would they rather have the road closed with the barricades? And that would greatly inform my decision on whether or not we move forward with a full road closure.
I agree with Abby and Laura, I don't know, maybe this would be a great thing to bring up on the meeting on the first of February. Have you had a lot of businesses that RSVP'd for that?
Um, no, I have not. Um, but I did just do a direct email. To each business and each property owner today and so, and I just sent them the. Link to that virtual meeting. But um, perhaps um, since that meeting is dedicated to the One Washington Place project. We'll send out a separate email with that uh, question alone and then compile the responses. Um, and present that at a future committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah, I think that's important because I know that at least one business um, has a pretty large crowd that comes on Thursday night. That would overtake that street and I keep thinking of the concern if that street was open. And people all over the place. I even saw vehicles. That came up of business owners that drove through that area with that crowd there and I just cringed. The entire time because they could barely make it through with the people all over the place. And there are little kids running around and people walking all around and it. And I would hate to take that away because that was an event that attracted so many people to that area and people looked forward to it and I. I, I don't want to speak for the business owner. I hope that they are looking to continue that again through the summer.
So is the question to the business owners, um. Would you, would you be in favor of us uh, applying for temporary? Full closure of the roads for um, specific events. Uh, until such time as we receive the approval from I dot to make this a permanent one-way.
Right, giving the option that we could leave it open and leave the visibility open to a lively street, knowing that it's going to have to be mixed. Mixed traffic and everybody will have to go slow.
Meaning the Warner just the way it is. Well opened. Okay. Be happy to do that. Um, and I think that we have the staff has the direction that we need. Do you feel satisfied with that, Gary?
Yeah, I guess I just wanna make sure everyone's clear. We've already made an application to I dot for the full closure, temporary closure throughout the summer season. We don't act on that. We don't have to act on an application. If I dot approves it, it doesn't mean we have to do it. It just means it gives us an option. We've already applied for one-way southbound. Again, we don't have to do that, but it would just give us the option if that's what we want to do. Tomorrow, we can implement a one-way northbound, which I think all had ruled out as not being the best option. And then the fourth thing, which hasn't been done yet, uh, and Alderman Beck asked about it earlier, and that is. A separate application for just specific dates. Which may be a moot point if we end up switching it to one-way southbound and it may be a moot point if we end up going with the. Year-long temporary closure. So that's why the, the specific date one hasn't gone out the door yet because. We kind of need to get answers on some of these other things first. So that's, that's kind of where we stand is until we kind of know the answers from I dot, we don't even know what the options are yet.
And do we send I dot any mixed signals when we do multiple applications or do they know that our priority is the one-way? And do we send IDOT any mixed signals when we do multiple applications or do they know that our priority is the one-way?
No, I, I was clear in my correspondence with regards to the, the temporary closure that, that this perm, that your closure permit won't be utilized if, uh, it is, is granted.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Okay, and I think we should move on to item number fourteen, which is a discussion of the Wilson Street mid-block crosswalk. Fifty feet away.
Still in the same neighborhood. This, uh, was on our agenda at, uh, the request of Alderman Ure. I believe we first had discussed this when the, um, small committee of people were working on, um, bikeability and walkability in the downtown. And one of the problem areas identified is this, you know, very not ideal, um, intersection that we have of River Street and Wilson Street. And, uh, discussion of the crosswalks that existed at that location occurred. And then I believe that there was also the discussion about why there isn't a crosswalk that, uh, goes straight across the roadway perpendicularly from, um, the southeast corner. And, uh, the reason is because it would have to bisect a left-hand turn lane. And then what's directly across from that, I believe, is Wilson Street Tavern. And they have an outdoor seating area that leaves only thirty-six inches of, uh, sidewalk out in, in front of it. But we certainly could, um, try to, you, you know, hire an engineer to draw that crosswalk and submit it to IDOT and see what they say.
So that's where I think some of the confusion has come in because it's not from the southeast corner of the intersection. I believe Alderman Ure is asking about a mid-block crosswalk further to the east from where the sidewalk comes out from the tiny shops.
And then we just. No, no. No, we first talked about this in June.
It's on the east leg of the intersection, then that, then that's kind of my other memo that I wrote that that requires a complete reworking of the intersection. So focus within the confines of the intersection, that's a completely different context.
Laura. Yeah, I just wanted, for the record, kind of clarify that where I saw some of the emails that were going back and forth, it was never discussed as a as a mid-block in the true sense of the form. I don't know where the terminology of mid-block has started to take place because it has always been brought up. As Mark just pointed out, I asked about it back in June, uh, June fifteenth at that, at that meeting, where the discussions from that point forward, and I know Abby's brought it up, Mark's brought it up, that it's a squaring off the, of the actual intersection that already exists. The, um, the, the, the east portion of that intersection that ends at Wilson. Um, it would be a normal four-way crosswalk, but for the fact that it's not four-way, it's a three-way intersection. So I'm, I'm not understanding how a three-street configuration would not lend itself to a normal squaring off the intersection for crosswalks. Any more so than any other, uh, one that, any other intersection that is a, a T-intersection. Because that's all this is. The, I know it was just brought up that the crosswalk would go across a turn lane. But so it does twenty feet to the, to the west of that, it goes across a turn lane or in front of a turn lane.
I guess perhaps maybe I should take down, um, uh, my screen for a second and, and get to Google Maps so that we can be looking at the intersection, but it the way the crosswalk is now, the southwest corner attaches to the northeast corner of the roadway.
Which is only because.
Because the streets don't match up.
Configuration of River Street doesn't line up.
Right.
So that's actually like a weirder intersection to have the crosswalk because it's going diagonally across two streets. And this is more a simple request of going straight across, straight across. And it's not the, so that everybody's clear, it's not talking about a mid-block from the alley to the sidewalk at uh, the boardwalk shops. I, I don't know where that kind of came from.
Yeah. Marty, I think the only confusion on the mid-block came because it is, it's mid-block on the other half of the street. And I, and I think in that conversation in June, the term mid-block was used because it terminates in the middle of a block at something that does not currently have um, a corner. It doesn't currently have the ADA accessibility. It doesn't have all that stuff. It's in the middle block when you get across Wilson. In front of Wilson Street Tavern.
Okay, so this is our intersection. So where would the crosswalk on the southeast corner terminate to the north?
White van straight down to the ADA compliant.
There, there's a light pole throwing a shadow almost in the line we would want it at.
It would be right there.
So you do not call this area of the facing block mid-block?
I'm saying that it's not the mid-block as Gary was just suggesting, that it's the mid-block through that longer travel, the longer trailer from the I want to make sure that we're talking about the right section of the roadway. It is not from the parking lot to the alley.
No, I was, I think what I was describing in my, um, setup for this is from the north. I'm sorry, the southeast corner. The corner right, you know, where, where you're crossing to, uh, crossing South River Street, but on the east side. If that is, if the terminus of the crosswalk heading north would be in front of Wilson Street Tavern, how is that not mid-block?
No, we're not saying that it's mid-block. It was saying that mid-block as Gary was just describing it is not what we're talking about.
Okay, so you would take it back to the corner over here?
No, you had it right, Laura. So, so it's, it's just, let's, let's, we should all agree to drop the terminology mid-block.
Absolutely. Hundred percent agree. Hundred percent agree.
So can we say the sidewalk that goes to Wilson Street Tavern?
Yeah. It, it would be perpendicular from that corner.
Yes.
Across Wilson Street.
So logistically, logistically, that would require coordination with the signal, new pedestrian signal heads, new actuators, ADA crossings, uh, reconfiguration of the left-hand turn lane. So that's a separate, that'd be, have to be a separate request and, and something in the, in the IDOT. And so I guess.
That was just what I wanted to make sure that we were clear because I know Abby in one of the discussions had brought those very portions up in the recommendation that was we do it all at the same time. And I think that goes back to where Mark's status check of it, we thought all of this was being done. That's my understanding was we initially brought up the intersection. It was pointed out that all these additional ancillary items needed to be configured as part of it. We were aware of that. And I think that's what we're trying to figure out. Where is the, the breakdown in communication with IDOT as to those goals that were stated?
Okay, so I have a, a separate email from Alderman Beck who then expressed concerns about just like the van in the picture that's turning left, going from northbound to westbound. That van comes around the corner and hits those pedestrians in the center of what is the marked crosswalk. That is, that is actually what has into IDOT right now is to looking at the protection for those pedestrians. Um, the dedicated, dedicated, so it would have to be a dedicated signal that would be to protect the pedestrians because people can't see them as they're coming around the corner. That was the stated concern. There've never, there's never been a request put into IDOT, although we can, for a crosswalk on the eastern edge. Um, but I actually addressed that in, in my email to council recently, and that was all the things I just stated to you. So that's, that's no small project. It's not just as simple as painting a couple of white lines. That, that may be you know, into the, into the tens of thousands of dollar range to, to put in a crosswalk.
Gary?
Yeah.
Gary, could that, could that crosswalk be located, you know, even if it's six or eight feet further to the west? So that it lines up with the, the terminus or the end of the turn lane?
Yeah, it's not, the turn lane's probably the least of the concerns over there. It's, it's the reconfiguration of the traffic signal to accommodate a new crosswalk. And the physical construction, just the ADA stuff and all the, all the traffic signal work.
Yeah, because I mean, like on, on the south end or the southeast corner, that's already got all the ADA compliance stuff right there. That wouldn't have to be touched.
Right.
It would just have to be created over, I think at the very, like, the the, the dividing line between Wilson Street Tavern and, you know, the, uh, six plus Cypress building. That's really where I, looking at this picture where I think that would end. And really all you'd be doing there is the concrete work. I get that you have to redo the, the lights and you'd have to have a, a, a pedestal over on the north side of Wilson Street so that way you'd have a place to, to turn it on and off at.
I guess that you probably have to lose the patio for Wilson Street Tap. There just isn't enough room there to put an ADA ramp and pedestrian signals and actuators and still fit between roughly five feet between these fence and the curb.
Alan?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's so that we're going forward. I want to know what we uh, because as we just passed the, the minutes for the meeting, it was asked, um, that Mark brought up that we've made, uh, three inquiries into them about studying it. So I guess I don't know what we've asked them to study.
That's the other, Alderman Callahan, that's the other issue, the issue of the pedestrians crossing in the crosswalk, the existing crosswalk. That's the, that's the, that's the, that's what we've been talking with IDOT about. The, we have not asked IDOT to look at the eastern, eastern crosswalk.
Right. And that's where I said I was wanting to move this forward because my understanding, starting from June, was that this intersection was going to be looked at with that intersection there. I believe that is the same assumption that several other aldermen had in what was to be conveyed, that the uh, the east portion of that natural intersection was going to be studied along with the new crosswalk signaling, et cetera. So what I would like to do is point forward, go to the next steps of making sure that this entire intersection is holistically looked at with what needs to be, um, presented for obtaining a new or in the, the construction of that crosswalk with the signalization, uh, light questions that, uh, were brought up at that time. If that is to take a point from what was previously said, if we need to make that in the form of a motion, a resolution to direct staff, I think that's where we want to be able to make sure that our prior conversations are memorialized in giving you the direction moving forward. So that we're all on the same.
I think where we're at is it's a, it's just an unbudgeted engineering project for us to engage. And so, um, that would likely come back to you in the form of approving the, um, contract for the engineering. Right, Gary?
Yeah, and I, I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but I need to get far in the weeds. When we made the request for the southbound roadway conversion for North River Street, we were actually able to use traffic counts from the twenty sixteen study that we did for One Washington Place because IDOT agreed to that based on the new planning year for CMAP. And again, I don't want to go too far in the weeds here, but, but IDOT agreed to basically bend the rules and allow us to use that old traffic intersection study in order to do the one-way southbound plans. And IDOT agreed to that and they're moving forward with that. If we go back to IDOT with anything for this intersection, they're going to make us or want us to do the new traffic study, which we can do. I'm not saying we can't do, but from a timing standpoint, I'd really rather not muddy the waters at this point because if we got one permit in with the old study and we now submit a new permit in with a new study, that's going to send up flags at IDOT. I'd rather get the old one approved and southbound ready. Then we can jump back in with a new permit and a new study. But it is, that is going to require a new traffic study, updated traffic counts and a full-blown intersection study, which we were luckily able to skirt on the southbound request. But this time, now that you're actually modifying the traffic signal, there's no way they let you skirt. They're gonna, they're gonna make you do an up, updated, uh, traffic study, which we can do. I just asked for council to consider a timing on it. We just may not want to muddy the waters at this point.
And I am trying to consider all of those options, along with the fact that in the last eight months, the that area has significantly changed. And we have a new draw to that southeast corner that is generating three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And as a result of that, we have people that are crossing already there. So it is a matter of pedestrian safety where people are going to cross at the path of least resistance. They are going to cross without wondering why there's no brick. They're going, I've seen it time and time again. So as a matter of if we need to, um, muddy the waters, then I would err that we muddy the waters as a uh, proactive step for pedestrian safety. Instead of.
Do we want to wait until the, we receive the approval for the southbound on North River Street so we do not jeopardize that decision?
One other thing, if I may interject, um, one thing that I could see that's going to be a potential issue is that the uh, Wilson Street Tap has their outdoor dining area there. And that's going to require an ADA ramp. And that ramp is going to potentially interfere with that, that, that dining area. So they may have to remove that or move it entirely if they can. Um, so that may have some impact depending on where that intersection lands of that pedestrian crossing.
The, then move that sidewalk and have it end fifteen feet farther west of Wilson Street Tavern where there's nothing in the sidewalk, nothing obstructing.
Be kind of a triangle?
Not much of one. It wouldn't have to move that far, Laura. Just whatever it is, three feet, however, whatever that distance is to line it up with five plus Cypress building. Less than, less than the, less than the angle it is on the other side of the intersection.
Absolutely.
Exactly. Precedent's already set that it's not straight.
But again, the, these aren't rules we can design. These are going to be rules we're going to have to follow from IDOT.
Well, so I guess.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I guess I don't necessarily want to wait. I think we, we can put political pressure on people to, to try and start moving this from a, from a political standpoint as well. My fear, and I said this, is what I said a couple of weeks ago, is why I was asking you about this, is because when construction starts, that northbound sidewalk on Wilson is going to be closed. And anybody trying to get down to River Street that may live on the, um, the northeast side of Washington. Now they got to come up to Washington, they have to cross the street, then they have to cross the street again, then they go down to twenty-five and they have to cross the street, then they have to cross the street again. They're crossing the street four times to get to River Street. And we need to get ahead of this before we create even, um, more pedestrian incidents because of the fact that that sidewalk is going to be closed.
Just to clarify, from North Washington Street, they would be able to use the sidewalk on State Street to come over to North River Street as an alternative.
Okay, and so I understand River Street, but you have Wilson Street Tavern, Oak and Swine, Boca Ditos, six plus Cypress, where these people are going to have to cross four streets to get to it. And that seems excessive.
But Mark, if somebody's already walking from that area, they're not going to mind walking over a street. And, and I can tell you from experience because I do walk from my house to downtown Batavia all the time. I will take Wilson Street and if I'm already walking that far, you know, we've already planned to walk on the south end of Wilson Street. Um, because we know that the north end is going to be closed. And one thing that And one thing that we'll do is that we'll take people past the little shops to interest them in that if they're going to the businesses on River Street. So it just gives those shops, even in the merchant aisle, some more exposure from people walking from the east side of Batavia.
No, I understand that. I'm trying to get people safely instead of crossing four streets. I mean, walkability is going to tell you, you want to cross fewer streets or the, the crossings should be safer. And we don't have a safe crossing there. And like Marty said, people are crossing there and it's not a crossing and that needs to be addressed. Trust me, I cross, and I've talked about this before, I cross 31 at a non-crossing, but I do it very carefully.
So hey Gary, can I ask you a quick question, please? On the sidewalk in front of the, the Batavia Tap, that's kind of a narrow sidewalk along there also. If you're going to put in a handicapped accessibility ramp, you know, that's going to take someone to sidewalk. Don't we need like some sort of an area of refuge also? At that intersection, if that's going to be considered part of an intersection?
Yeah, that's the ADA thing that'll have to be looked at. I mean, as part of any intersection study, you know, if you move that, you know, I mean, you can move the, the crosswalk as long as IDOT, you know, says it's okay. Um, but that, but you also have to make sure that the, that the sidewalk meets ADA for not only getting across that sidewalk, but for anybody that's traversing through that. So, you know, that may make you have a wider sidewalk because of that. So, but that's, that'll be part of the intersection study.
Right, that, I guess that's the point I was making. It's just not simply, like Gary said, putting two lines across, not even putting up a, a, a traffic signal. It might have to be widened and then we get into a whole host of, of issues. So I just want to make sure we're all aware that we're going down a rabbit hole sometimes.
Today pedestrians can walk literally, so if I were to walk right next to the curb on that sidewalk, I could walk east-west right next to the curb the whole length. If we introduce an ADA ramp, now that first five feet or so roughly from the curb is no longer considered an east-west walkway. The east-west walkway would then, is with this area of refuge that Mike was saying, that, that then, that has to be that area behind the ADA ramp or north of the ADA ramp that would allow for unimpeded east-west, east-west pedestrian travel. So, um, that's what I brought up and Scott's brought up, that, that, the, the Wilson Street Tap. If, if the Wilson Street Tap's fence is five feet off of the curb and that whole five feet is taken up by an ADA ramp, that won't work because now eastbound and westbound traffic have to traverse this sideways across the ADA ramp, which is not allowed. Good 10 feet of sidewalk there, you can definitely A ramp in, still have the remaining five feet of, of needed, needed pedestrian pathway behind it.
And I think that would just. Go ahead Scott.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how far into the intersection IDOT would have an issue with it. So if you, if you put it right in front of Six Plus Cypress, is that going to be too far into the intersection? I just don't know that, that answer.
I don't either. So it gets laid out and we'd have to study it. It'd have to be done with survey and everything.
It's a much wider sidewalk there, but it's easier to.
Until you have somebody shoot it and lay it out and say, is this acceptable? You're not going to get an answer from IDOT. Or they're going to tell you that this is, this is, you know, here's what our minimums are for depth of the sidewalk and, and width of the, uh, ADA section.
Yeah, I know, and this, again, not that it can't be done, it can be done today. It's, it's a full-blown engineering study with the intersection. That, that's basically what, what is, what is being asked for and that's fine. We just need to get an engineer involved to do that.
Hey, I, I think one, you should get the numbers for us Gary, if you can kind of roughen what it's going to cost to do the study, to do the traffic study, you know, for the light and what it'll take, you know, time-wise to get everything ready to send to IDOT so that we have that. By the time you get that back to us, hopefully we already have our permit for the southbound North River Street back. That would be my hope. So.
I hope that IDOT acts very quickly, not because I act very slowly, because it shouldn't take that long. Hopefully IDOT acts quickly.
And, and I think if we, if we were to do it that way, one, then we don't risk the chance of them backing or stopping the other one to wait for a new traffic study for, for that part of it. Um, knowing that we still have months before we really have to have better traffic flow across or better pedestrian traffic. Um, the boardwalk shops aren't set to open for several months. I, I would hope that we could get this done in that amount of time. That's, you know, my hope, because as long as we still have no construction on the One Washington Place site, we still have an open sidewalk on the other side, Mark, for, for your benefit for people to, to be able to have access to that. And, you know, I think, I think there's ways we could engineer this and move that a little bit to the west on the north side of Wilson Street so that that doesn't impact the business that's already there, because I think that's something that they like to have. It's something that I know people use. And I, I think it, you know, it's definitely an area where we have to do something different with the crosswalks because it's not working now. I've, you know, been down there almost every Saturday on the weekends and people walk right across Wilson Street. If there's not, you know, if they see a break in the traffic, they go. So, you know, it's a common thing and I think if we can, you know, change that with actually having the ADA access and having a a striped crosswalk, that's a good thing. And thankfully, we're not going across four lanes of highway because we know how IDOT is with four-lane crosswalks. Just had to sneak that one in there. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, um, Laura, let's put this back on, um, a discussion topic in two weeks. So we can talk, talk it about again in two weeks and see where we're at with it. And that'll also give us an update on what the, the closure status is on River Street.
Yeah, Alan, as part of that, maybe we can get some other examples of T intersections. I mean, this is not an unusual intersection. It's a T intersection with some slightly varying lines. But at the end of the day, it's, it's a T intersection with a crosswalk. And there's got to be other precedent for this with a state road. So if we can find it or Abby may already have it all catalogued in her rolodex for the surrounding 48 states.
Well, and, and I can tell you, trying to use an example from another city or another area in Illinois, it just doesn't fly with IDOT. They, they'll have their minds made up what they want to prove and that's all they're going to do. So.
Is it me just being new to this and naive, but like, we're citizens of Illinois and we are taxpayers and we have representatives. And, and if it's a state agency, don't we have a voice and we, can't we vocalize those frustrations and concerns and try to make some positive change?
We, we do. And one of the things that I've learned with IDOT over the years is it can be even different from area to area, um, the different, um, zones that are in the state of Illinois. You know, you can say, well, you guys have this in zone one, but you won't let us do it in zone two. And they don't have a response for it. And it's like, it's, that's not, that's not something that they want to talk about. This is their rules and this is what they tell you you can do. And it's, it's very difficult to, to me to try to get somebody to listen to, you know, obviously somebody that has studied this and knows, you know, traffic patterns, pedestrian patterns and wants to try to, you know, pose their case to IDOT. Sometimes I don't think they want to hear it.
Then I think to Abby's point, I know several of us are reaching out to the state reps because they're the ones that, that fund those agencies. And if at budget time, they're not doing those things that need to be done, then some defunding situations may be in order. And now that Madigan's gone, maybe there is a new shakeup in trying to figure out how things are run instead of just the old way with, oh, we can't do it.
Yeah, I'm actually on Active Transportation Alliance event coming up and I don't remember when or exactly what the topic is, but it's me and another elected official talking about like how local municipalities are, you know, deal with these issues and so it's all, uh, all an interesting web. So we have allies in that advocacy group too that can help us.
Yeah, and especially kind of just along that lines with that advocacy group, it's leading, we are trying to make something safer into a small business economic revenue generating, uh, good story right now. And that's what more of Illinois needs. And that is going to be the direction that America's going to take for the, at least the next four years.
Okay, and, and you know, maybe we do need to think about more of a unified, um, front to send to IDOT. You know, if it's not just a request from our staff to do something, but it's a request with 14 signatures or 15, including the mayor from us as the council members, then maybe that needs to go with the requests. You know, to put a little weight behind it and maybe even talk to our state reps to ask them if they can even just make that call or send that email to back us up on something that we're requesting, especially when it's something that comes you know, from a public safety standpoint like this crosswalk. You know, that we, we do have to start exerting that kind of pressure to try to get things done. I'd, I'd be willing to sign that letter and send it. Okay, I think that ends the discussion of the River Street, Wilson Street corridor. Um, up next would be project status, Laura.
Sure. Um, today we received the great news that, uh, Region Eight in which Kane County is situated, has moved to Tier One mitigations. And I'm sure that our restaurants and bars and towns are absolutely thrilled to hear this because that means that they can now start, um, letting indoor patrons. Um, they are limited to the lesser of 25 people or 25% of their, uh, capacity. And then also just wanted to let folks know that on, uh, today was the first day that, that Batavia Public Library is, is allowing people to re-enter their building as well. They have a maximum capacity of 40 people inside. Um, and then also the, uh, Batavia Park District is resuming a lot of their recreational programming. They're also opening up the, um, venues that people can rent for, um, events. Of course, they have to stay to the limit of, uh, less, fewer than 25, um, people because there's always at least one person from the park district who has to be on site for those events. Um, the Illinois, Illinois Department of Public Health put out, um, a press release about Regions Eight and Nine moving to Tier One and it contains a little bit more detailed information than, um, I provided in my brief over, overview of it. But, uh, one thing we're really anxious to hear about is how we can move from Tier One back to Phase Four. Um, that would need a test positivity rate of less than or equal to 6.5% for three consecutive days for the seven-day average. And staffed ICU bed availability of greater than 20% for three consecutive days for a seven-day average. And the third thing is no sustained increase in COVID patients in hospital. A seven-day average for seven of 10 days. I also, um, heard that the, uh, the state is providing notice of the locations where vaccines are going to be administered in, um, this next round of 1B. If you're interested to see what locations there are here, um, you'd go to coronavirus dot Illinois dot gov and go under vaccine information and vaccine locations. There you put in your zip code and it will show you what vaccine locations are, uh, in our area. Currently only our Jewel Osko is a, uh, vaccine location. Um, but there, uh, you'll see on the page that there are not at this time any appointments available for that. But it's good to see that the state is putting together some, um, uh, infrastructure to, that will help um, get vaccines to those people who are eligible in Round 1B. Um, things are, uh, really busy in every department, but I just wanted to provide you with some of the highlights from community and economic development and from Public Works. In Public Works, a final schedule has been provided by the contractor for the Paramount Substation Reconstruction Project. It's scheduled to commence construction already by mid, uh, February and will be completed by midsummer. This is the, um, substation that is, uh, primary to most of our industrial customers in the northeast part of town. Engineering has finalized contract with Road Botics. And this is a company that's going to assist us with a system-wide assessment of evaluation of the, our city's roadway network and, uh, that assessment will be performed in late spring. Electric will also be issuing an RFP for a system-wide power pole condition assessment evaluation. And this project is going to occur throughout, um, the summer months for us to identify um, the, the health and stability of all of the poles that are part of our electric network. And then also engineering is working with Kane County. Um, we're hoping to secure another Community Development Block Grant. Um, over the past years, we have been successful in securing funding for some of our roadway projects. Um, and, and hope to do so again this year for the 2021 resurfacing program. I think a really great aspect about the Community Development Block Grants are that they target funding for, uh, infrastructure projects that are in low and moderate income parts of our city. And so, um, we certainly have been grateful for the assistance that we have received in the past for those. Also Fire, um, Chief Dyke, you know, he's been just excellent at, um, applying for grants in the past. And currently he's working on a 2021 OSFM grant and also on a FEMA grant that we hope might assist us with, uh, the purchase of our next fire vehicle. Um, in the community economic development side of things, the spec building on Pearson has resubmitted, uh, their plans and we're reviewing those. Um, let you know, the Plan Commission is meeting on February 3rd to consider several rezonings of um, city-owned property and also a downzoning of an industrial parcel on Redant Road. Um, and the Plan Commission has made recommendations on cannabis dispensaries at their meeting on January 20th. That comes back to the Committee of the Whole on February 9th. Um, we are receiving a very large influx of new permits for just a myriad of different projects. These include several of the final homes in the Tanglewood Five Development, new townhome buildings at Prairie Commons, parking lot expansions for the Suncast facilities, review of the city's water treatment plant expansion, and also internal change, um, at the United Methodist Church. Uh, let's see, I think that is all that I have unless you have any questions about particular projects. Just a reminder, I don't know if it was, uh, mentioned tonight, but February 1st, we are going to be holding a, uh, meeting, an informational meeting about the One Washington Project for all adjacent business owners and property owners. And I will send all of council the link to, um, the login information for that Zoom meeting. You are on mute, sir.
Everybody likes that. Um, does anybody have any questions for Laura tonight?
I just have one follow-up question Laura, and this is something that you'll have to bring back to us, but I'm just curious on how many, um, businesses took advantage of the liquor license renewal. An idea of, you know, we know how much was projected that it would cost us, but I'd be interested in knowing what the final number on that was.
It was very high. I think nearly everyone, except that we did have someone contact us specifically to say we're doing well right now and we, uh, choose to pay the fee anyway, even though you've been so kind as to offer a grant to cover the cost of it. But this year I know that, um, North Aurora has announced that they are waiving their liquor, uh, renewal fee for those with a poor license, not, uh, for those with a packaged liquor license. So that might be something that, uh, city council may want to consider because those with a poor license continue to, um, face the, the restrictions. because those with a poor license continue to face the restrictions. I'll look into that for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on into others. Does anybody have any others tonight? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to go into executive session. So I guess for purchase of real estate, and we don't expect any thing to come out of that tonight, so we will adjourn this meeting and then everybody call back into the other one. So can I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion, we move to executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion by NAB, second by U.R., I believe. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we will move into executive session and come back on to the next meeting. See y'all there.